Good evening. I'm Janet Anderson. I called to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 at 7:30 PM. So for everyone, the exit is the way you came in. These exits to my left are for emergencies only. In order to comply with the open meetings law, we must meet in person. We do not have the capacity for the public to attend by Zoom, nor can we stream our meeting to YouTube. However, we will post an audio recording of this meeting to the town website, and materials considered at this meeting are available in the agenda packet that's also posted for this meeting. Members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewissboro NY.gov. Kirsten Conrad, our Planning Board Administrator, has confirmed that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements are fulfilled. Joining me tonight from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Paul Fusco, John Guzmano, Charlene Delacato, and Bruce Thompson. We do have a quorum, and thus we can decide, we can conduct the business of the board and vote on any matters that come before us. We also have our consultant, Jan Johansson from KSCJ Consulting, and Council Judge Seibert. The Planning Board Administrator, Kirsten Conrad, I already mentioned. And we are not sure about whether or not the building inspector will join us tonight or not. So the first item on our agenda is public hearing. This is calendar number 09-24 PB, calendar number 19-24 WP, and calendar number 12-24 SW. The villa is at Vista, 920 Oakridge Commons, South Salem, New York. This is an application for the construction of 12 housing units in Building 9 A and B, four of which were previously approved. So notably, since this was last before us in September, we did get approvals from ZBA and ACARC. I just want to have a comment about how we handle public meetings, public hearings. The purposes of a public hearing is for us to hear what the public has as concerns or questions about the proposal in front of us. It is not meant to be a discussion or a dialogue. We want to hear things. The comments should be addressed to the Planning Board, not to the applicant. And this board will take into consideration all the comments we hear as we continue to review the application. So with that, the applicant will give a summary of the project. I'm going to say that I suspect some of the people here are for this, and so maybe that could skew a little bit. We've seen this, and perhaps it can be more visible to the public.
Is there a reason?
Yeah. I think some people, if you want to speak, please sign up with Kirsten. I think some people already did that, but, okay.
Good evening. Michael Sereniano, attorney for the project, and our project architect, Bob Eberts is here. And before I turn it over to Bob to briefly describe for the public the project, I just want to note both the ACARC approval, since we last were before you, and at the end of September, the zoning board also granted the variance that we needed. In granting the variance, the zoning board made two important findings. One was there will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. And secondly, there will not be an adverse effect or impact to the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And those are critical findings the board has to make before granting a variance. And after hearing the evidence and from some neighbors, the board reached those conclusions and granted the relief. So we now have, from a legal perspective, a fully conforming plan before you, and I'm going to ask Bob to just briefly describe.
Bob Eberts, CrossFit Architects. Hope you're all doing well this evening. I'll do a quick run through for the project. If anyone would like me to go slower, please just slow me down a little bit. We're talking about Building 9, which is a building that's westmost on the site. This property is surrounded on three sides by multifamily dwellings. So we'd like to convert this building that's been really underused for many years from a cabaret restaurant and fitness center to a total of 12 residential units. Now, four of these units have already been approved by this board. So we're here for the remaining eight units that we're proposing. Now, there's a lot to like about this proposal. We're taking away approximately 9,000 square feet of existing impervious space and turning it back into green space. We're also adding approximately 300 plantings on the new plants on the property. That's trees, shrubs, and flowers that we're putting into that space. The amount of parking is being reduced as well on the site as part of this impervious area. We're taking away the parking lot to the north of that building, and we're taking away the drive aisle between the daycare building and this building. We're also modifying the parking lot to the south to reduce some spaces there. Again, this is just an effort to turn it into more and more green space on the site, which I think everyone will agree is a positive thing. Now, the storm water on the site currently is untreated. It flows through the parking lots directly into the pond in the back. And as part of our wetland mitigation, we're creating a filter system where we're collecting all that water, putting it through a filter, and then releasing it into the pond. So we're improving the water in the pond. We're improving the storm water situation on the entire site, not just on this little corner of the property. But so it's a big impact, I think, for, you know, that you really don't see physically, but it's there, or will be there when we complete this application. Traffic, of course, will be reduced. You could imagine 12 residences don't come close to using the amount of traffic that one cabaret performance might run for the fitness seven to eight years. So again, greatly reducing those. We know that wastewater, or rather, water from the water plant has been a big question for the residents in town. And we're reducing the amount of water. I think there was 13,000 gallons of water that was allocated to the fitness center and the cabaret restaurant. Now we're reducing it to approximately 9,000, I'm sorry. We're reducing it to 3,600 gallons. So a 9,000 gallon savings to the plant, which is a great thing. So I think those are all really wonderful things to happen on the site. Let me walk through it real quickly with you. The red is where we're indicating. We're taking away all the, this is a parking lot here. This is the road that we're taking away. We're reducing some paving over here. We're taking away those two decks back there, and some of the building on the side of the building here. Taking away this vestibule, the fitness vestibule that was here, and we're taking away the vestibule that was over on this side as well. So again, all of those areas being reduced. The gray areas that you see are the areas where we're proposing new residential space. So it's a big impact. Similarly, you can compare that with this floor plan, which is the main level floor plan or act grade floor plan. And you can see that we're taking this back building, which we call 9B. Now, this was the one that was previously approved. And we're adding, putting two small additions on. Again, this is just to improve the residential character of the building and putting on some decks for those folks as well. We're taking away an addition that was here, and we're putting a smaller addition closer into the corner here. And then lastly, we're putting an addition on the north side of Building A, and just a small, again, that's an architectural detail that we're adding there. So we are adding some space. We've got a total of 12 residential units, including the four that we previously approved. Now, two of those are also going to be AFFH, which is affordable units. Now, we were obligated by the town to provide 10% of these units. We've got 12 units, so two of these units, they'll be these two center units here, will be the affordable units. Now, all of the units that we're proposing are three-bedroom units, and that includes the affordable units as well. So we've, we're also working with the facade of the building. Can you hear me okay? I'm speaking loud. We're addressing the facade of the building. Now, those two additions that we were showing on the B building, that's to create these two residential gables here. Again, the porch will be there, the sliding doors. We're trying to dress it up more like a residential building as opposed to the somewhat rundown, you know, commercial-looking former warehouse building that it was. And so we're trying to dress this up, putting a lot of plantings in to, again, soften that building quite a bit. The addition that we were talking about is really on this side over here. This is on the north side of the building. Again, it's got its own gable, again, to try to bring that residential look in. We're using two types of siding materials typically. We're using clavering siding. We'll use the hardy board siding, if you're familiar with that. It's a great product, very durable, holds its color. You get a 15-year guarantee from the manufacturer on the color. So that's wonderful. So reduces the maintenance that's required quite a bit. We're also using the hardy shingles, again, as an accent. We'll change the color of those. And we're using a stone product. It'll be a stone base along the, let's say, the east side of the building. And also, you'll have different stone features, again, on the west side of the building, facing the pond and facing the other condominium buildings. We have some retaining walls that are coming along, and again, we're going to make those out of stone as well. These are just the two elevations. This is facing north and south. Again, same materials, same stone. You can see the stonework that we're adding here, stonework that we're adding here, again, with lots of plantings. Again, you can see we've got asphalt roof to match the rest of the buildings in the complex, and a lot of the materials are, and the colors are staying very similar. I know there's been a lot of questions about, that have come up about landscape. And we had our landscape architects pair of plants. I'll leave this down here, but these are some of the many plants that we're adding on site. So you can see we're adding quite a bit of color to the property. We're adding a lot of flowering trees, flowering bushes, and many smaller flower, like these black-eyed Susans, you know, lower growing, but flowering trees. Now, a landscape architect pays a lot of attention to the season it blooms, whether it's evergreen or not. We put a lot of effort into making this, again, feel like a residential setting and somewhat separating it from the commercial portion of the property. So we put a row of arborvitae along the far side of what was that crossroad between the two. And again, that's trying to help us give a visual barrier between what's residential from here back and what's commercial from here forward. Again, that barrier, I think, is going to help. Now, there was also a question about the fence on this north side. Now, that fence is falling down. It's needed repair for some time. We are replacing that with a new six-foot-high vinyl fence. We're also coming in with arborvitae. This is the green giant arborvitae along that. So again, above that fence, you're going to see those green trees continuing to grow up. They grow about 40 feet high. So you're going to see a lot of green there blocking the view from here over onto the site. But, you know, we aren't making the building any bigger. I should say, we're not making the building any taller than it currently is. So you're not going to see anything more, I don't think, than you see right now. You're going to see less as these continue to grow up. We are planting some evergreens along the property, and we're also putting some shade trees on the property as well to, again, soften this up, again, make it very a hospitable area. There's been some questions about the dumpster, I know, that came in through the email. Our dumpster location is over here. Now, that's going to be surrounded by a six-foot-high vinyl fence. And now, as a result of some of the great questions that came in, we're adding 10 new plantings around that to soften that up, including a flowering tree. We've got some evergreen laurels, cherry, I'm trying to remember what he told me, cherry flowering laurels on the back. We've got some rhododendron on the side, and then some junipers, again, in low around it. So again, they're stepped levels to really soften that up. And from this side especially, it's going to, I think, look very attractive. Now, I'm going to see that as a nice sort of all.
Yeah, on that, I tried to look, but we don't have the full plan. Where is the, is there a dumpster that the childcare facility uses? And is that, you know, since people don't seem to have been concerned about that, is that something that would be convenient or not convenient for the, as a consideration?
That dumpster, Jeff, am I correct? That dumpster is up by the...
Oh, it's way on the other side. Okay.
It'll be past the, like, center by the car lot.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, never mind then. I just, I was thinking if it existed and...
They used to go to the back, and then what they'll do is they'll just go like...
There was a dumpster here.
Yeah.
We're removing that area, turning that back green. So again...
Yeah, so you need a place.
It's probably the same distance.
Right. Well, I'm glad that you heard the concerns and put in some landscaping changes. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. I interrupted you, but I just, while I was thinking that...
No, I think that's most of my presentation. If you have any questions, of course, I'll try to do.
Okay. I do, well, I guess I'll let, if other people have some questions at this point. I think you've addressed a lot of questions. I guess one question would be, once you get approval for this, what, how long, do you have a sense of how long it might, construction might take and might be going on?
This is going to be a phased project, of course. Now, the first phase, as you know, we've got approval for, from you. We've made an application to the building department. We were able to get a demolition permit. So the demolition has started on that portion of the project already. That is the 9B main floor level. The permit application for the construction of that, of those units, is in with the building department now. I would say I'm expecting it in a week, and I think, unless I'm wrong, I think the construction will start almost immediately on that.
Okay.
We will follow that up with construction of the lower level of 9B. And again, if you, we'll probably roll that all in. As soon as one's finished, we'll roll into the next. So I would say that as far as completion goes, expect it to take probably six months to complete the upper level, and another, maybe three months, to complete the lower level. So I would say within the year, we're probably looking for those five units in the B building, that is, the building that's against the pond or for this west, to be completed. We're in about a year. Now, the front units, the seven units that are in the front, will go in a separate phase. And I'm assuming that if all goes according to the plan, construction will start on those probably a year, a year out from now. And again, since we're really starting ground up, construction will probably take a year for those. And so hopefully, this will be wrapped in two years from now.
Great. That's helpful. Thank you.
Two years, approximately.
Yeah. So also, there was a letter from the fire department, and I understand that, is that what you were going to ask?
Yeah.
Sorry. And I understand from Jan that there's been some discussions and some progress on that. I don't, could you maybe give us an update on that?
Sure. So I spoke to Jeff, the fire chief, about this, and there's a little confusion going on right now as far as exactly what they want. I think he was looking for some way to get across where that road is in front between daycare and fitness. When we do something that, you know, grass is growing fluid, but they would have the ability to go through. I think Jan and I spoke, and to the right of the building is where we think that the access really needs to be, because it's not like, so we'll talk to Jeff and get that worked out. It's either or. We're happy to do either or.
Yeah. I like the idea of permeable pavement, you know, and I know there's a couple different kinds that still, as long as that goes. And I have to admit that I did not think at all about, as you took that out, that there might be some constraints about getting to the childcare, too. So I think this is, I think making sure that they're happy is the right thing.
We will work with that.
And I understand, so it is going to be sprinkled and alarmed, all of these units, right?
Yes, that's one thing.
We wouldn't be doing that without them.
It would be fully sprinkled and have updated fire alarms.
And for the record, Phil Pine, can you tell us who you are?
Yeah, just for the recording.
You have to say it, who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Phil Pine.
Thank you.
I own the shopping center.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry I didn't catch you faster. The other thing that I guess we had talked about once about is, are there going to be external mailboxes? Are they in, are they in the lobby? Do we have a numbering scheme?
What I'll do is I'll go to the post office and kind of figure out what they want. They always want something outside. So they're not going to want something inside. They're going to want to be able to drive up to something and put the mail in there.
Okay.
So I did forget about that. We will probably have to put something, just like we did in the townhomes, where they can come up and all 12 apartments will get the mail from one spot, because that's what they want in the post office.
And in addition, I know that we've heard a couple times from the maintenance people who say, we want to make sure we can get to the water meter without having to go, you know...
The water meters now are remote, so it's not as, so each one of the units, for the townhomes, it's inside, but it's a remote system that they actually can do from the South Salem. It's not, so it's going to be the same exact name.
Okay. I just, I know that we've heard that they want to make sure they can get the information, and so just, again, for the record here...
There's going to be a mechanical room also that they'll be there and will be able to turn, if they have to turn them off, which...
Right.
The other thing is, as the owner of the shopping center, I'm the person that come after anyway, so it's not actually the tenants that, so...
Right, but...
I have to make sure those bills are paid, no matter what, no matter what.
Right. But if there's a leak or need to turn something off, they need to be able...
It's going to be in the chemical room, and they'll have a key to it.
Right. Okay. So does, if nobody else has anything, we'll open it up to the public. Do you have a question?
No, just the post office. Maybe it should be for the record. There was some post office issues as to...
Oh, the public hearing?
Yeah. And just for the record, if you can sort of state what you did and how you did it.
As far as notices?
Yes.
Certified mail return requests sent out to 100 and some odd people. It was, we went to the online system that was within 250 feet.
Gives you the radius.
And we actually got back, cost the 90% of the return receipts, which I thought I was going to get that 20% that was wrong. So we did fairly very well as far as notifying everybody. We also sent it to Plazability, which is the management company for both Oakridge and Boulder Ridge, the townhomes. So I think it's one of the better notices I've ever dealt with.
There was also a newspaper notice that was put in, and the sign was supposed to...
There was a sign.
Okay. And I think this picture of the sign was in our agenda packet, as were many of the little green...
As were the white receipts that are, they're all stamped by the post office, indicated that they were provided to the post office at the time of mailing.
Okay.
The post office loves this.
Yeah.
More.
All right. If there aren't any other comments, we'll open it up to the...
I just have one up. Before the planting plan, I know Jan had some notes on the list on a few of the items. And I would just, if you could take a look at the Andromeda, the little princess pyrea, the Korean lilacs, just to see about going, everything else is, I think, for the most part, were the Nellie Stevens. Everything else is native except for those four. And then you have the daylils and nepeta. If they could just maybe look at some native alternatives for them.
Absolutely.
Not the end of the world, none of them are invasive, but just to see what options are.
We've actually addressed most of those, and I know Landscape Architects sent me on an updated drawing today. I don't think it's 100% yet, but it's very close. So we'll work through the last few things.
But this would be in addition to those comments. Please ask him for his whole, like, your, would you 100% native?
I see. Okay.
Once again, if you could just take a look and see, you, in particular, the perennials, nepeta and daylil, you've got like 200 of them, which, great, wonderful, just, you know, 200 over two plans that aren't native. So if they could see what options are available, if that's okay.
Sure.
Nothing crazy. Otherwise, I think everything works well. Jan's comments were spot on, so if he addressed those, then I think that should work out well.
Just the doors.
Okay.
The one other item was, so on the site plan, the parking lot in front of the daycare that then yields straight across, and then you, you know, the part in question that's connecting from like the front and back of the units that was originally taken out, that's what's in question with the fire department, I guess, right now, right? The connection between the two?
Yeah, that red section.
That section. So, I mean, I guess how that gets resolved would play into this, but I'm just concerned about creating the unit accesses there so that it's not north-south, or east, or maybe it is north-south. The road that goes right in front of the parking lot goes in front of the daycare up to the new area, that opening there, does, I'm just nervous that now you're bringing all the people to those units that are going to be going, trying to cut through and then looping around, that do you close that opening so you're not getting through traffic in front of the daycare? That's my concern.
No, there's a road that wraps around here now.
Yeah, absolutely. I understand.
And that goes to the, to the other condominium developments as well. And you could still turn it in the exact same place you do now. And it comes to the daycare here, or the back, or you can come back into this parking lot, which will serve the residents.
No, I get that. I'm just concerned, because right now, the way, my child goes to the daycare, so I'm just very concerned with the parking lot.
Maybe, maybe go to the next slightly larger, I think on the next page, it's slightly larger.
Good idea. Just that, so that road, if people, once again, it's not used now, right? It's a vacant building. So I'm just nervous that people, instead of doing the loop up and around and come down, is that people will cut right in front of the buildings through the parking lot? And this is a hyperbolic...
Cut through here?
Yes, cut through straight across. It may never be done. I'm just, because it doesn't seem it needs to be a connection, or if it's a drive over for fire trucks, but stopping local traffic, maybe. It's just something of a thought to try and not get through traffic in front of the daycare.
You know, we had a scheme earlier, really coincides exactly with what you're saying. What we were doing is closing this access, closing this one and opening it up here. We chose to eliminate that work for now. I think we're going to come back and visit that again, but it was really just to that point, to, again, separate the residential traffic from the, from the commercial traffic on this side.
Yeah. So if you're, when you're looking at that fire truck connection, so if you can just think about that again, that's great. That'd be wonderful.
We'll take a look at that again, and truck work.
I don't understand. People walk through that on the front side, so you can see this.
Yeah. This is the daycare center here. They've got a parking lot here and right here. This is the residential parking lot. So what we were talking about doing, and we took it out of this application, we're talking about closing this entrance and opening it up through here, so that they would have a separate access here rather than come down into this section. So this would all be, serve the residents, and this would all serve the commercial forward.
But the concern right now was, again, I'm confused. My apologies.
Yeah.
They're going to be drawing traffic.
Yeah, just...
Oh, as far as the residential side, I mean, these people are obviously going to go to this side. You know, the units on this, which is nine, you know, will be, and...
this, which is nine, you know, will be, and will they go through there to?
Once again, yeah, I don't know, and it may not make sense for them. It was just one thing of trying to keep that separated.
I understand what you're going.
I think, I think most people would go by the road because it's open and clear, they can probably drive a little faster rather than through the, through two parking lots, because to get here, you'd have to go in front of the, in front of the vet as well.
Or a stop sign.
Yeah, with signage held.
Which is, I don't think people will go the way that you're talking about. I think he's right, they will go around and go, you may get some to do with it.
Yeah, no, fully understand, but if you're looking at the area with the fire truck, just.
But it's something we had actually talked about, so I brought it up, you know, said it's something we've been thinking about on the site anyway.
That's perfect.
So we'll make them come back with an application for that.
Appreciate it, thank you. That's it?
No, and I do appreciate the comments about being as native plant centric as we can. I know that there are things that are not so happy growing here when you have deer and people and drought, but, okay. But yeah, I do appreciate you looking at that too. Okay, we do have one member of the public who's signed up?
Jeff Freeland.
It's a little difficult to talk about the things that I've written in my letter, a few, and some other things, because everything's different from what would you may available to see. But I guess that's the way it's done, I don't know.
Well, there was stuff in the, I don't know where you saw it, there was pretty much what we have here.
I saw it in this building, in the office.
I mean, things were submitted a couple of weeks ago. Again, I'm not quite sure when you saw it, and.
I saw it today, and I saw it last week.
Well, why don't you address?
Tell me, tell us what you want.
Based on what you now know, since it was different.
My primary concern, we own a condominium which is directly opposite from the addition, 72 Fox Run.
And so when you say directly across, you mean to the north there, or?
Right.
Right about there.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
My primary concern was the fence that was here, which is leaning like this, I have a photograph if you want to see it, but it's leaning about that, so they said they're going to replace it. But I just, I'm hearing now it's going to be plastic instead of.
It's going to be vinyl, similar to other fences that are in the development.
Well, all the fencing that goes, you're not going all the way back and around the post office, are you?
Could you, could you address the questions to us, and then we'll get the.
The fencing that starts in back of the post office, it goes all the way around Fox Run, it separates it between the commercial space and the residential space.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, if you're going to switch to plastic, and the other is wood, would, you know, seems to be all right, I mean, there's a few places where you could use a paint job, but it just seems to me it's going to be incongruent if you're going to get shiny plastic against what was the wood structure to begin with, at the point where it breaks off and is pulled over. So that was my first, yeah, well, who is going to be responsible for replacing it? Obviously they're going to do it. I would like to see it match what they already have, preferably, but, you know, that's up to me. The other thing is that the plans that I originally saw showed propane tanks in your closed space between what was the parking lot and what was the fenced area that was there. What happened to the propane tanks?
Can I, can I answer that?
Yep.
We've removed them, and we've decided, we are thinking about having a propane tank in the ground for a generator if, but we haven't gone there yet. So we're going, really, we'll go all electric in the building. So all HVAC, you're going to be heat pump related, and, so those two, remember, I'll make them a thousand gallon tanks of them. They're gone.
Okay, so, but if you're going to have propane tanks for, we had an issue in the condominiums right immediately adjacent to that, that they wouldn't even allow propane tanks on the decks.
Propane tanks on the, I'm sorry.
On the decks.
On the decks.
That's a building code. That's a building code.
Yes, so, yeah, I'm just curious where your propane tank is going to be in regard to adjacency to, I mean, the space that's allowed right now, and is showing on all the plans, is here, okay?
There's an in-ground tank that is proposed on these plans. It's going to be in underground.
Because each plant has a different statement. The architect review plan shows one thing, this construction shows one thing, and the new planting plan shows one thing. None of the plans match up. There's nothing congruence between the three plans.
Yeah.
And I, at least when I came to the planning board for many years, we were expected to have everything to be congruent, so I'm just, you know, I question.
Good point, good point.
Plans haven't changed, but the propane tank is shown here, it's a buried tank. Now, we were not going to install that tank if we want all electric inside, which is what we're now considering. However, we may come back with an application for a generator, and if so, we'll put a similarly buried tank in a similar area.
Right there.
Again, we aren't, we aren't going to talk about putting that in right now.
Okay, but I mean, again.
When it comes, it would come back before us as a site plan, another site plan review.
If they anticipate doing it, and they're going to come back, why don't they just show it on their plan as possible loca, de-location if they come back?
Well, because if they put, if they put site plans together, we expect them to build it. So if they don't know if it's going to get built yet or not, you know, we try to be.
The plans, the architectural review plans, okay, do not match up with these plans. The contour map, the contours have disappeared, you know, the plans that I saw had contours, which had nothing to do, okay, I mean, this week, the plans that.
We, okay, we do have some contours, but I understand your point.
There's a, there's a grading, there's a topographic.
Why wasn't that?
Which was not in the purview of the architectural review board, so whatever you saw at the architectural review, there's not need to show.
But it wasn't in the plans I saw in the office.
I don't know what you saw, but there's an engineered site plan with photography on it, a grading.
Is that required? In your office?
Well, okay, so.
It's in the agenda packet.
It's in the agenda packet. It's, so it is in the thing that was online, it's part of the submission that we got. I don't know what exactly you looked at, I mean, sometimes one of the things that does come is we get, you know, a submission that has the landscape plan that's separate from the architectural drawings, and then we get a site plan, so sometimes there are different packets.
But if I called and come to a public meeting.
Yep.
And to comment on what I see, okay, but I'm looking at plans that are totally incomplete or incongruent.
That, that's not interesting.
Well?
It's just not.
Well, okay.
What did I see in your office today?
You noted there were a steep contour near the building, you were concerned about children's safety, so you definitely saw contour lines.
Yes.
East of the pond.
Because there's a contour map.
Exactly.
So again, we want to hear what you have to say, if you have a concern.
Well, I, I guess one of the things is the incongruence of the presentation that I was permitted to see before I got here. Okay, that's, that's one of the things. You called for silt fencing. They're doing construction up there now without silt fencing, and the ground is all turned up from the machines. Is that what you want, or is this the type of?
So that would be an enforcement issue that we, if the building inspector were here, we would ask him to take a look at it, we can certainly ask him to look at it, because we don't, we here don't do enforcement. We do plan approval, and then the building inspector, the code inspector, well, basically.
Who's the weather inspector?
I'm the weather inspector.
Jan is.
You don't check out?
We're not aware of any construction that's happening up there. What is the?
She gave the permit.
This hasn't been approved yet, so I didn't give the permit.
Well, what they said is the, the four units, there was doing some demolition on the, but I don't know.
It's quite extensive, by the way, I mean, what they're doing.
Well, so what we can do is ask, because again, we'll ask the building inspector to take a look at that, perhaps we could get that message to him, to say, you know, please go out and see if it's complying with the, with the demo permit that they've received.
The other thing, and I, again.
Just mention that the permit wasn't issued yet for the, for the construction.
To this work at all, no, has not.
For the demolition permit.
The demolition permit for the three units.
For the three units, which I assume is mostly internal.
Correct, correct.
But it's not.
Well, okay.
It's all outside.
We don't, we will ask the building inspector to go.
The building inspector will be asked to go.
Go out and look.
Find out what's going on.
All right, is there, will be anything done about noise abatement over the course of two years, to the tenants who are there, and to the owners?
Well, so we do have a noise ordinance in town, and that does apply to, it's actually pretty specific about some construction activities, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
And at times also.
And, and I think that, that what we expect, again, this is an enforcement issue, but that if there's not compliance with that, the building inspector will go out and adjudicate or enforce.
Well, I have the photographs of the site as it was, there's a lot of ductwork just piled out there, there's no blocking between that and the childcare center. I'm not saying the child kid was, find that an attractive nuisance or not, but probably. And it seems to me that if that's the quality of the work that they're doing, then I'm a little concerned about the construction.
Okay, and again, the, we can approve the plans, we don't compare the execution to the, you know, on the ground, that's really the building inspector's role. So it would be something we will, we will certainly ask the building inspector to take a look at the situation and see if it's compliant with the, with the permit and the code.
Okay, a question, there was a comment, who made it, about the water usage?
Yes.
Was that per day?
Yes.
Okay, so 3,000 gallons per day?
I think it's 3,600. I won't, I won't say it's an exact number.
Well, the exact number would probably be 2,700, that's why I was just curious.
Okay, well, what is your concern with the water?
Well, it's a little bit like our concern about global warming and things change. I would imagine with the original numbers, since this, this building predated existing, and there was nothing proposed for it at that time, I don't believe, I don't remember a restaurant ever being proposed for that space. I would imagine that way back when, when the loads were determined, okay, on the, on the water system, it was probably at the rate of a warehouse, which is what the building was, at the time that I moved into Lewisboro, in '72.
Okay, so what we have is.
That time Valley Road.
We have a lot of data about, and, and I believe it was also, a lot of it was in the, the agenda packet that talked about the usage and the capacity. And we have been told by the engineering group, the town board, that the amount of water that is being used now is fairly represented by those, that, that data, and that is well below the, what the Department of Health says is both the capacity of the water system and the capacity of the wastewater system. So that this incremental addition is, will still keep everything within the, within the, well below the, with, with quite a cushion below the capacity of both the drinking water supply and the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
I mean, that's, it's a good question, it's a question we asked, as Phil will remember, that we had.
It was significantly less than the use that was there, which was the fitness center and the restaurant. That, that usage was significantly more than the usage we're looking at here, twelve apartments, which is based on the usage at the townhomes now. Is significantly less than what the health department actually.
Right, so, but, and it is true that, that those places have been vacant, but even so, I mean, haven't, haven't been drawing water, but even so, the amount of usage, even compared to the actuals that we've seen over a number of months, I don't, maybe two years worth of data, shows that there's, there's sufficient capacity. So, I mean, I, water is extraordinarily important, I absolutely agree with you. We believe that the capacity is more than adequate for the anticipated use for these apartments.
Okay.
Yep. Excuse me.
Yeah, I was concerned, I mean, one of the things I was concerned about was that steep slope that exists off both parts. One side would have the fencing, but the other side wasn't. But then I, until I went and looked at the architectural review plans, which was today, I didn't know that they had anticipated a major excavation. I don't know, where does all this dirt go? Hundreds of yards, you don't care about that.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know exactly what happens with the dirt. We know what it's supposed to look like afterwards.
Right. There's a lot of dirt. And they're building, they're building, they're building the proposed unit on a fill, at least unless I'm really still.
So we just finished the townhomes, which had 30,000 yards of excessive dirt there, and what you do is you haul it off. This, this is nowhere near that type of site-related work, so. And as far as bothering the neighbors and the, I spoke to daycare literally today, you know, so I'm working with them to make sure that it's going to be safe, and it's, and we're trying to do the site work as quickly as possible, because it's not a significant amount of site. The biggest issue that I think I'm going to have with this is just timing, because planting and getting to stabilize the, whether it's the lawns or the shrubs, you know, our timing is not wonderful as far as how that, so that's going, that's my biggest concern with what's going on there. I'm thinking six weeks, site-related work done, clean it up, and then that kind of, then we're basically inside except for the three units that will be new on the outside there. And we're going to do those last. And that's going to be a construction job, just like it was with the 46 units we built over the last number of years, which, and it's going to be as pretty as that, so.
Good.
And I'm happy you work, you know, if people have concerns, come, talk to me, I'm available.
Well, I, I, I am a little concerned about the way the site's kept right now, so I.
It's, we want to clean it up. As soon, like, all that site equipment that's there.
Right.
Is to be used to clean up the site, and as soon as that's done, I'm, I'm literally getting rid of it, I'm done doing site-related work, so I want to clean it up, and you're going to have, where you're living now, you're going to have a beautiful, beautiful area, you're going to be proud of it. I'm going to be proud of it.
Okay, well, I, you know, this is.
Okay, do you have other comments for us?
This is what I'm talking about.
Okay, we already, we already addressed that, we said we're going to ask the building inspector to take a.
And you know that you are always free to contact the building inspector, if there's something you have concerns about rather than waiting to see us.
I would hope that you would take the responsibility for that.
We're not, yeah.
If we don't know about it, it isn't our responsibility actually, but we don't, we will pass the word anyway, but you are also free as a citizen to reach out directly.
And, and, you know, we're not out there daily, so if you see something, you know.
Well, I only went out there because of this application and trying to make, I couldn't find plans that jive with each other, okay? They're total incongruence, so.
Okay, well. Okay, well, that's one of the things that we have our consultants help us with, to make sure that things are all lined up. Okay, is there another, thank you very much. Is there someone else who wants to make a comment to the?
That's Monty?
Yes, I do. Hi, that's Monty, I live at 297 Waterbridge Road. And I am in favor of reactivating this site. I'm pleased with the design and its compatibility with the rest of the development there. My concern is with the location of the trash receptacle. It's very visible where it is as you're driving in. It's like fairly close to the road, so it's a big box. Yes, it's enclosed and fencing, and it will be painted, and I understand it will look like the other one that is there that is used mostly by businesses. But it seems like things were very thoughtfully planned, and then the trash.
So, you might-
I think you arrived after he explained all of that, so-
So, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Can you just briefly recap what you take, because they've listened to the comments and made adjustments.
Basically, there's going to be planting. They're leaving it in the same place, but putting some landscaping around the location.
So, this is the dumpster area that we're talking about. Going to put a six-foot-high vinyl fence around that with gates on it. Based on your very good question, we've revised the drawing to show three cherry laurels back here. We've got rhododendron on either side. This is a, I have to start, I have to start the word. Serviceberry, white serviceberry tree are there, and there'll be some, two Harvard junipers down along the bottom. So, we're putting in approximately 10 plantings around just that dumpster enclosure. So, this could be very nice. And again, all flowering all night.
You know, it's convenient for the garbage trucks driving in. That is probably not as convenient if it's moved more this way or over here. And this is, I guess, an entrance, so you wouldn't really want it there. I mean, that's, it can't be turned this way and then sort of like a drive here if they back in and go. Instead of facing out, they would face this way, so it would be a little more, less obtrusive. And also, I feel that the residents have to use that, and multiple people using it leaves the possibility that it's not going to necessarily be closed correctly. People have millions of Amazon boxes, they throw them in there, and, you know, I'm just concerned about what it's going to look like, and so if it could be potentially turned in some fashion with access on the side.
Okay, so, you know, again, I don't want to end up with a big dialogue between, but we've heard the, we've heard the concerns of the neighbors. We did, I think before you got here, sort of asked about a couple different placement options. I think they understand the visibility aspect of it, and I think all we can do is sort of ask that they take a look and say, is this adequately screened? Is there a way that we could make it better? You know, I, it does have to be within, you know, I'd asked about using the same place that the, that the children's center uses. That's way at the other end. People wouldn't really want to walk that far. You know, I mean, we did explore, before you got here, a few other options. And I think, I think all we can do is ask that they, that there be sensitivity to it. People will have to, you know, will have to abide by the rules and try to keep it clean and neat, and that's going to be one of the things that, as the manager of the site, they're going to have to look at.
We're going to want to keep it clean and neat. Fortunately, I have people at the shopping center during the working hours, during the weeks, or during that time, and people that are living there are going to want it.
Yeah.
They're going to want it to look nice, because we're renting these units, and we have the same concerns. We spoke about this earlier, took a look at it. I think by landscaping around it, you're going to make it look very, very presentable. I think you're going to make it go away, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for the landscaping.
And I looked at it, we spoke, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to say anything?
No one else has signed up.
Okay. Jan, you did have a memo that's pretty extensive. I mean, I think a lot of it had to do with some of the same landscaping issues. I'm not sure that there's anything there that's, I don't know, do you have-
I think we kind of touched on anything.
I think we went through a lot of that.
Unless you want me to go through item by item, but it's, you know, we have a considerable number of landscaping comments.
He just does the exceptions. Whatever.
The fire department comments, we'll make sure they get addressed.
Right. Now, I'm-
The lighting plan, let's listen.
Okay, so, did you, you said something more, you want something more explained from his?
No, I said if we've covered all the points, if there are any exceptions that we missed that weren't covered, then-
Majority of the memo is on the landscaping.
With some, I mean, a lot of it was fairly detailed items that, you know, they'll work out. Okay, so, if there's no more public comments, I guess we would look to close the public hearing, so I'd look for a motion. Charlene moves. Two seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do have a resolution that was distributed to the group before. Do you want to run through that, Jan?
This is a, it's a resolution for site plan approval, wetland activity permit approval, stormwater permit. I think I'll skip the wherethes, you know, the thorough who describes the application, the zoning district, the fact that it's zoning compliant, that it received the zoning variant for the building size, that a portion of the projects within the wetland buffer, that the wetland mitigation is in the form of stormwater quality, hydrodynamic separator to improve water quality going to the pond. The applicant prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan. There's a number of wherethes regarding the water and sewer, and the fact that the planning board issued a secret determination, a negative declaration on August 20th. Goes into the fact that the planning board referred the matter to the Westchester County Planning Board, and that the county provided comments on July 9th that were all addressed by the applicant, that it was referred to the fire department, that we received the comment-
I found this on the web.
Comment letter from the fire department on October 8th with comments, which will be addressed as conditions of approval. The application's been approved by ACAR. Itemizes the plans that were prepared, both by the architect and the civil engineer and landscape architect, regards to the lighting plan, landscape. The conditions include addressing all the fire department comments to the satisfaction of the building inspector, fire department, and our office. The dumpster enclosure details are on the architectural set. We asked them to be on the civil set, and we'll make sure that the comments regarding landscaping are incorporated. There's a fee in lieu of recreation, similar to the last application, so that fee will have to get paid. Written approval from the town board regarding water and sewer services. The inspection fee, based on costing construction of site work, 5% costing construction of site work, addressing any outstanding comments from my office, and then the pro forma kind of comments about issuance of the wetland implementation permit and the stormwater permit, and deciding of the plans. There's a number of conditions relative to the satisfied part of conditions of a building permit, and also a series of conditions that have to be complied with during construction. And that includes having a copy of the plans and resolution that's slip on-site at all times, compliance with the approved set of drawings that our office is to conduct inspections, and that the applicant, as an engineer, supervises construction. Conditions, kind of, operational conditions are that the dwelling units are to be rentals, that there's to be two affordable units that must comply in all respects with the applicable section of the zoning code, including construction, size, appearance, marketing, eligibility, lease, occupancy, and administration, that the total number of bedrooms is, for 12 apartments is 36 bedrooms, that the fire protection equipment must be diligently maintained and remain operational, that the landscaping must be maintained for the life of the facility. And then it goes on to identified maintenance responsibilities, being the owner of the shopping center for stormwater drainage. And that's also stipulated in the slip, maintenance responsibilities, and maintenance protocol of all the stormwater practices.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on the resolution for Jan? Okay, I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution as just described.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
John and Charlene, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the site development plan. This is calendar number 18-22 BP, calendar number 38-24 WP. This is Bichon LLC, H70 Route 35, Cross River, New York. Could you maybe take any conversations that you want to have outside? That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, Bichon is an application for change of use from residential to commercial professional offices and outdoor parking of three flatbed trucks. So, this has been in front of us for a few times. We did have a, we opened and closed a public hearing in August, and so with that-
Yeah, I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I think Jerry Barrett has been working with Patrick, our project architect, on a wetland permit application, I believe, was delivered. So, I don't know, does any changes you have to point out since the last-
No, we received the latest memo, went through that with Jerry. Everything's very straightforward. We've made the adjustments to our plans already, adding details on the accessible parking areas and on the truck turnarounds. Jerry's working on his, so I haven't done, Charlie.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
I didn't think any of the comments were significant.
I just have one comment. Since we've been talking trash, is it possible that you put a fence around, vinyl fence around your garbage dumpster?
There's no garbage dumpster.
Or-
They're committed to just having bins.
Bins or bins. Would that be possible?
It's possible, but I don't know that it would provide any benefits, since it's not even going to be visible from the street or any other property, really. Do you want the last one with the bins?
They're not even showing up there.
Oh, because they're just moving-
They're just moving garbage pails.
Yeah, I think he had mentioned at the last meeting, two pails.
Correct.
And where will they be? Or just any place?
Most likely on the side of the building.
Probably on the side of the building, for convenience for the tenants, like-
I thought there was a remark about that.
Yeah, I mean, so, I have seen these bin enclosures, if it's going to be sitting outside all the time, you know?
Yeah, something like that. It doesn't have to be a fence, but Janet makes a good point, a bin enclosure.
I would imagine they can be active in this area behind the vestibule, so it's easily accessible for both of the offices.
What, if I may ask, what kind of garbage services are going to be for this? Because if it's residential, it's a truck that picks the bins up.
Well, it's going to be office use, so it's basically paper waste.
All right, it's not, where I'm getting to is, my point is, if they're bins like what we use, which are these big green roll-up things with the flop top, they're picked up by a truck and moved. If you put an enclosure around it, they can't do that.
Correct.
They just have to be put out.
Well, or the doors, sometimes the doors open. Yeah, well, okay, we're not going to try to sell it.
I would imagine it's going to be garbage pails with plastic garbage bags inside of it.
No, I'm saying I think enclosing them is not necessarily a good idea.
It is a commercial place, and sometimes with commercial areas, people dump things there, too.
Well, that's one of the reasons we don't need a dumpster, and we don't want one for that very reason. I can tell you, behind my building, people just help themselves to my dumpster. Put whatever they want in there.
I was going to say, they're not taking out, they're adding, right?
Well, so maybe what we could do is see how it goes and keep it in mind, and ask if it, you don't think it'll be an issue?
I mean, they don't have people coming in. This is just the people who are operating the business.
The office and the tow-
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, they're screened on most of the sides, anyway. I don't think they're visible from people, from neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I think the big, I agree somewhat, that the big improvement here has been the fence all around it, the property.
And cleaning up the property.
Yeah, and, and the plans that exist to remove some of the asphalt and enhance the protection of the wetlands are the real important pieces here, so. That said, I guess we can always look and say, if there's a, you know, if there's a series of complaints or any problems, you know, we can ask the building inspector to take a look. Are there any other comments anybody has?
Just one of the comments from Jan's letter was noting the quarry logs versus doing the stone swale. I mean, I second that. I think it would be just a longer term, for assuming this is going to be here for a long time, and just something that will last longer, not run away. Yeah, so if we, whatever we need to do to push that forward, I agree with it.
I was going to say, Jerry, he's making a change.
Okay, yes, it's in the comment letter. The comment letter's a condition of the resolution, so we'll make sure it gets done.
So, with that, perhaps you'd like to briefly touch on the highlights of the resolution?
Sure. It's a site plan approval and wetland activity permit for the conversion of the former residence to two office tenants, one of which is proposing the storage of three flatbed tow trucks. The use is a permitted use within the underlying zone. There's a reference to the interpretation that was made by the Zone Board of Appeals on that issue. The application requires a wetland buffer disturbance, both the town and state D C buffers, and there's a requirement for a D C wetland permit. there's a requirement for a D E C wetland permit. There was a referral made to the Westchester County Planning Board. The planning board opened and closed a public hearing on August 20th, so it's been resolved. Resolution identifies all, a series of plans prepared by Patrick Crook as the approved set of plans, as well as a wetland buffer mitigation restoration plan prepared by J.D. Barrett Associates. And then the conditions prior to the signing of the plan, doesn't any outstanding comments, obtaining the D E C wetland permit, and then it's just the pro forma check set and signing of the plans. Will probably just require some, I want to go through the, the operational conditions. So maybe I'll just, I'll just read them because I've seen another copy. There should be no, there should be no storage of tow trucks or other commercial vehicles on site until all work has been completed and the C O issued. Construction-related vehicles used for onsite construction activities are exempt from this requirement, so basically can't have your tow trucks there until you're ready to operate. Once a C O has been issued no more than three tow trucks and/or commercial vehicles shall be parked or stored on premises at any time, and shall be parked in the spaces designated on the site plan. The tow truck business shall be for dispatch only, and damaged or wrecked vehicles shall not be parked or stored on the subject property. The parking of tow trucks on the subject property shall be solely, shall, the parking of tow trucks on the subject property shall solely be during on-call periods between off-site dispatch. All right, John?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. The outdoor storage of vehicles, equipment and materials other than that depicted on the approved plans is prohibited. Then it's landscaping's maintained for the life of the facility. It's the applicant or owner's responsibility for maintenance. The wetland mitigation is to be guaranteed for a period of three years. That includes plantings and invasive species removal. And that's it.
Any further questions on this? Okay, so I'd look for a motion to adopt the resolution as Jan just described it to us.
Absolutely.
Paul moved.
I'll second it.
John seconds. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so if we could pass this over to Kirsten. So the next item on our agenda is towards the end of the year. So we have a series of meeting dates that are proposed for 2025. There are a couple that do hit Katona Lewisboro vacation days. I think there's a couple that, that hit Jan's vacation days, but he will arrange to get, if he's not, not Jan's vacation, but if he's not here, he will arrange to have some phone from his office.
There's a, just that they line up with school vacations, so I'm not giving it to that all the way. Certainly have confidence on that.
Right, so it's, it's basically the third Tuesday throughout the time. If, if it's okay with everybody, we'll, we'll ask for this, you know, put it into the more formal date, submission date.
By consensus?
By consensus?
Yes.
We're fine.
We're good.
2025 is coming sooner than we thought.
If you move it off of Tuesday, I'm in trouble with everything around Tuesdays.
Right, so, um, the next item is now the, now, the zoning, the zoning amendments. So what we understand now is that they are going to be given to us officially, referred to us, I should say, by the town board on October 28th. So I think we probably should start to try to schedule something at this meeting, that we get too far out. We're going to be hitting all the holidays and crazy days, so. I, and, you know, it's almost like if we had it tonight, it's an easy, it's a short enough night, we might be able to consider it, but I'm not willing to gamble on November.
Yeah.
Being as late a, a night, so. I don't know, unfortunately, that the, if we try to stay with Tuesday, the Tuesday after, it would get referred to us as election day, and this room will be busy. And we might not, I don't know, that might not be a great day. And then I think our meeting is the 19th, so we would say we could possibly do the 12th.
I'm okay with 12th, I can't do that. The 19th, I mean, not be here possibly.
Wait, our meeting's November 19?
Yes.
Okay, right, the 3rd.
So we're looking at the 12th as a special.
I couldn't be here, but.
I know, but I'm sure if there are.
I'll provide comments ahead of time.
Perfect.
So when is it? What day?
I was looking at the November 12th, which is a Tuesday.
Okay.
And that would be a week before our normal meeting, but that would give us a chance to go through the, the items that we have.
Yeah.
And I think it's important, I did start going through some of the, I don't think Kirsten sent it out to everyone, but I'll ask you to send out.
Yeah, so the, there are, the result of the comp plan and the, and the code review process has, there are going to be multiple local laws that are going to deal basically with the different chapters in the town code. So the, the big one is the zoning code changes, because those were, those were really pretty expensive, new sections being put in, so there's one local law that's about 200 pages long. It's basically, you can see, it was easier to like put in, you know, in the context of what's, what it reads now, so that when you're reading the local law, you can see what it says now, what's coming in, what's coming out. So it sounds kind of daunting, but it's not, but it's available, so I, you know, I, you can start reviewing that now. There, there are four of the local laws that have been given to the town board for tonight just to begin review. They're much simpler, the subdivision reg changes are very minimal, they really just relate to bonding, you can look at those. The ACAR chapter, streets and sidewalks, and I know there's a fifth.
Excavation and?
Yeah, excavation and fill.
Fill.
The two that are being continued to put, to put into form for the, for the town board to look at, the wetland code changes, which are going to be not as extensive as, as the zoning, but still in that kind of package, because you really need to read it, kind of all in one, to kind of get it, instead of just seeing, you know, kind of, here's something that's going to go into here, and looking back and forth. That'll be ready for, for referral, and once that's, once that's sent to, to the supervisor in the town board, we'll get a copy to Kirsten, so you guys can begin to look at that. And the other is the steep slopes chapter, which is going to be fairly finite, but, you know, can, can look at that as well, so.
John, has anything really changed? I mean, are we expecting any changes from what we discussed previously?
What you're going to see in the local laws is basically recast, you know, what we were talking about before, when we were looking at, we were looking at this kind of like in the individual pieces, now it's all kind of plugged in.
But there, there's not, no changes that have been suggested?
No, if there are changes that have occurred, some of it is just wordsmithing that kind of got lost and shuffled. Some of it is just, we picked up and, you know, we didn't go rogue and start changing things in my office, but there were some things that we felt just could be cleaned up or tightened a little bit, really tweaking. But no, the, I'll say what, the kind of the meat or the substance of what is, is, it's, it's there, it hasn't been altered.
I think the, the update that we probably should make sure that people have is that at one point, there was a discussion of having all special permits come to the planning board, and the zoning board retains some, at, at least some of the ones that they, if not all, but, but the, the big things were the construct, sorry, the special permit uses for construction equipment and so forth. All stay with them and don't, not everything comes to us.
And when you see wetlands, the back and forth over how to possibly address the jurisdiction of the board at work, things are not going to change, as we're staying where you are. The couple of things that have been tabled, there was a portion of the code proposed for battery, battery energy storage systems.
Right.
That's become an issue for us and elsewhere, and the board wants to kind of put that on hold right now. And Lewisboro is not alone in that regard.
Right.
And what else? The sewers, the short-term rental is, has been tabled for now, and this, some of the sewer chapter.
Septic.
Septic. Also, those are going to continue to be looked at.
Is there a timetable for that?
Not that I've been told of. Yeah, that's a town board call.
Yeah, I, I mean, of those, I think the, the septic is probably the most urgent, but, you know, well, no, short-term, some, there are some people who say, short-term rentals also, but they, we'll see what, we'll see what we get. Okay, so we talked about the 12th, like, we didn't say a time, I mean, do we want to try to start a little early at like at 7:00 instead of 7:30, or I don't?
It's fine, I'm flexible, go either way.
I'm okay with whatever time.
You're ready? Paulie?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just checking.
Checking.
The real work count.
No one else is using the courtroom that night?
Thank you for checking that. I mean, we can.
Yeah, I should be, I should.
Do you want, I mean, I'm just sort of saying in case we're, we're slogging away, you want to say 7:00, try it instead? Okay.
Sure. This is the 12th of November.
Yep.
No, 7:00 is fine. Yeah, 7:00 or 7:30?
7:00.
Just to make it a really special day. Okay, so that's great. We also got a referral from Wilton, Connecticut about a application for a generator and wetland, in a wetland regulated area. Kirsten reached out to him and said, it's on the agenda tonight. They told us that it is, they've already hit their timeframe and it's not been done, so even though I have a drafted letter saying no comment, I think we can just agree, rather than sending, they, Wilton has basically already made their decision, so I don't think we need to do anything at all.
Okay.
Okay, so the next.
Wilton's okay, we're okay.
Yeah, the minutes of September 17th, 2024.
I'm okay with them.
Me, too.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
So. Motion from Charlene, second by Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our next meeting date is November 19th, and so I'd look for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:55.
I make a motion, yeah.
And Paul? All right, we have a second.
I'll second it.
John, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I was going to say, let's go next.
Excuse me.